Good evening, welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Tuesday, April 11th. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you very much. Apologies, our big screen is not working tonight. We'll hopefully get that squared away before our next meeting. Tonight, we have a very small agenda. I think Danielle has already screenshot the agenda. We have a resolution to approve a private drive name. That's Sky Park Lane, which is a very small subdivision on the former Sky Park property. We have a discussion, a resolution, perhaps to set a public hearing, local law D, a no parking on Fruit Bud Lane. That would be the portion of the roadway from Linden over to Rec Park and perhaps including the corner property there on the eastern side. And then the third item is a discussion and perhaps a resolution to approve a contract award for EV vans, something we've been trying to do for years now. Let's get those vans built. Okay, with that being said, we start out every first meeting of the month with the supervisor's monthly statement. This is a statement of the financial picture for your municipality, your tax dollars. What we have here is an opening balance, and this is for the period ending March 31st, of $10,597,000. We had receipts of $6.5 million, dispersments of 7.7, an ending balance of $9,335,246. Folks, we have some budget adjustments as we always do. Nothing of note, except I will say that our sales tax growth factor came in higher than expected. This was the last one. As you know, there's a new agreement, sales tax agreement, in place with county. And so we'll see what the implications of that formula is on our sales tax. Any questions? You have your variance report as well. Suffice it to say, we're starting to see some evidence of a bit of a slowdown on some of the revenues. As we perhaps anticipated a few months ago, our CTF money that came in was $14,000, which was on the low side for the last month. We do have a healthy balance in there right now, however. Any questions on the monthly report? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the supervisor's report? Very good, thank you, Julia. Is that a second from Bill Hamel?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we also have the town clerk's monthly report. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read that for the folks at home?
Town clerk's report for the period of March 1st to March 31st, 2023. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $3,942.04. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, $29. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $67.50. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $779.46. Total state, county, and local revenues, $4,818. And vouchers for March 2023. I hereby certify vouchers numbered 30257 to 30373, processed in the month of March 2023, are inaccurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Thank you, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So.
Thank you, Bill. Second?
Second.
Jacob Iannos, thank you very much. Okay, very good. For announcements, just well, happy spring, everyone. And boy, did it come quickly and with fervor. As we sit here, I think it's around 70 degrees and expected to be in the low 80s. So that means that our spring events for the community are coming up. And so we'd like to let you know the following. There'll be a news alert sent out tomorrow. And Danielle, I'll give you one of these. We can do a screenshot for the folks at home as well. First up for Earth Day weekend, we have E-Waste Day. That's going to be from 10 to 1 on Saturday, April 22nd. At the same time, and that will be at our recycling center. At the same time, we will have Repair Cafe going on over at the community center on Fifth Street. That's 10 to 1. Our E-Waste Day is being cosponsored by State Senator Michelle Hinchey's office and the town. The following weekend, we have Arbor Day Celebration on Saturday, April 29th. That's here at Red Hook Town Hall, 10 to 2 p.m. You can get free tree seedlings. There'll be a pollinator garden exhibit, and perhaps the local beekeeper will be here as well. Something new, and we keep trying to add to our community events. The following day is the county has scheduled with us a free rabies vaccination clinic. That's Sunday, April 30th. That's again here at Red Hook Town Hall from 8 to noon, 8:00 in the morning till noon. Backed by popular demand is our Community Shred Day. And that is the following Sunday, May 7th, from 10 to noon. That will be again here at Red Hook Town Hall. And we want to remind you, there is a limit of three legal-sized boxes per car. And that is on Sunday, the 7th, which is also Cleanup Day. So soon thereafter, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., we'll have our 14th Annual Cleanup Day. Come here, we have supplies, gloves, grabbers, garbage bags, recycling bags. And with the assistance of the Highway Department, we'll pick up those bags along the road the following morning. We will tackle and hopefully succeed at picking up much of the garbage before it gets mowed for the spring season. The following weekend, we want to let you know, in the village, is Apple Blossom Day. And that's Saturday, May 13th. And I believe that goes from 10 to 2, something like that. 10 to 4-ish.
Yeah, 10 to 4.
Yeah, a long day.
10 to 4, a long day.
We have bands and stuff, it's very cool.
You have bands this year? And that is put on by Red Hook Rotary.
And with lots of support from the Village of Red Hook.
And with lots of support from the Village of Red Hook. We will put that in there. Thank the Rockarians for their wonderful event. We have flyers for each one of those events, which will go out with the newsletter. And they're all right.
They're up on the website.
They're up on the website.
Remember, if the town would like to contribute a sunny day, that would be great.
We definitely could do that, snap of the fingers, sure.
Supervisor McKeon, for the record, can we vote on, can everyone vote on my clerk's report?
Oh, did we not vote on?
Because we moved it, seconded it, and no one voted. And I just want to make sure for the record.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
July, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Deanna.
It's very controversial votes. Too risky there.
Okay, we have a very ministerial act that we do. We have to perform each time, which is the, okay, a private road name. And simply what we do is make sure that the road name won't cause confusion, that there's not another road name in our community with the same name or similar name. And so we would like Sky Park Lane for parcels, subdivision on the original Sky Park on Route 199. And this would be resolution number?
20.
20, dated April 11th. Any questions, folks? Didn't think so. Subdivision was approved by the planning board back in June of 2020. And the requirement is from Duchess County that we look over the suggested name. And so Resolution 20 approves the title of Sky Park Lane, and I so know. Is there a second? Okay, I guess a second. On the verge of not passing that resolution, okay. Any further discussion, Julia?
Come, go.
Aye.
Aye. Bill? Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along for this very quick meeting that we have tonight. A discussion on setting a public hearing. If you've been following along, and we hope you are, you've signed up for notifications. We've been for some time figuring out a way to get folks from Rec Park East to Rec Park West safely, by walking or by biking. And so we set out to get a grant to help assist with the cost for a path. A path that will be alongside the northern section of Fruit Bud Lane from Linden over to our Rec Park. It's an eight-foot wide pathway. And that will delineate the area for pedestrians and for bikers. What it will mean is that the roadway will be narrowed on that section to 20 feet in order to accommodate the pathway and not go onto private property. That means essentially that we will not be able to allow parking just on that small stretch. I think it's about 500 feet or so, depending upon if you're measuring to the park or measuring to the corner. I think it's 520 feet. And so what we are contemplating tonight is whether to set a public hearing and when on that tangent. I did have an opportunity to speak to a couple of the landowners on Fruit Bud. One in particular who owns the corner property here at 11 Fruit Bud. You know, it's the one that, right, it's in particular here. And historically, he's had, you know, a lot of folks, when there's a popular event, park on his lawn and whatever. And I think even years ago, fashioned up some no parking signs of his own. And he is willing to and would like to have no parking from his driveway to the corner there. I don't know that there's anyone else who is interested in that. But, you know, I want to make sure we reach out to all of the landowners there. I have spoken to other ones. And make sure we get their input at the public hearing in case there are others who want to participate in that. But for that tangent, for the 500 feet, obviously, that's a necessity and not an optional thing. So why don't we look at our calendars? Folks, are we ready to get some input from the public on that little stretch there? Okay. And then we'll, we already have the plan, I think, on our website. If not, let's make sure we do. So we have a local law. We've instituted a couple of their locations, I think, in the last year or two, right? Chris, Theresa, No Parking. I think Metzger was one. Old Farm Road is another, near intersections, right? We did Old Farm?
Metzger, we did. I don't think we did Old Farm yet, did we?
Yes.
Did we?
Yeah, we did.
Across from the movie theater entrance.
Okay.
On the corner.
I remember that.
So this is to amend Chapter 131. That's the vehicle and traffic section. And so we'd want to put in some particulars here.
So let me suggest, are you in the resolution or are you in the local law?
Well, let's go to the local law. I want to make a correction there. There's a type of, you know, County Route 79, Linden Avenue, so let's make that.
And then if you want to do what you just described, I think what you would want to say is Fruit Bud Lane on either side from its intersection with Linden Avenue, County Route 79, approximately 520 linear feet to its intersection with the Red Hook Rec Park, Recreation Park.
That's correct.
And then the number F, a new number F, Fruit Bud Lane on the east side from its intersection with the town Recreation Park in a southerly direction for a distance of 165 linear feet.
I think we should say plus or minus. And let's get the engineer back to.
Well, your local law is your local law, so, I mean, the law is going to be the law. I think if it's going to be, if we're, if we have it stopping at an ending point, I think we can use an approximate linear feet distance because we know what the ending point is.
Okay, fine.
But when we're starting from a starting point and then continuing to X, I think we better be certain about X. So I think we should, you know, wherever 165 feet is, if that's approximately right, then that's where the sign's going to be, right? No parking from here to a corner or something like that, whatever it says.
If it's the frontage of this property, why?
It's to the driveway. It's to the driveway on this property.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, you know.
Because it says terminus right now, right?
No, yes, and we're going to take that out because there, because.
That would be the end to the cul-de-sac.
Correct, correct. So then suggesting that parking at the end of the cul-de-sac doesn't seem to be interfering with things.
Put it somewhere where you didn't want it.
Not the subject of the public hearing, really. So, well, I mean, we can amend it and then do it again if we need to, I guess. If that's not right, and we just looked at it.
Yeah. Well, let's do 165. I think a minor change, right? Even at the public hearing would be sufficient, right? A nominal change in the square footage. We can get the engineer to confirm.
Cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, can we read the revised language of that one?
So E would say Fruit Bud Lane on either side from its intersection with Linden Avenue, for N, County Rep 79, plus for N, trauma, approximately 520 linear feet to its intersection with the Red Hook Recreation Park period. And then a new subsection F. Fruit Bud Lane on the east side from its intersection with the town Rec Park in a southerly direction for a distance of 165 linear feet. And then we need to amend the, because we're adding a new subsection F, in the introductory language under Section 2, where it says, "Town of Red Hook, 131, Section 3, Parking, Stating, and Stopping", it's hereby amended to add a new subsection E and new subsections E and F, right? To read as follows, okay?
Yes, Deanna.
And I'm handing, Deanna, for the record.
Thank you.
I've got a copy for her.
Public hearing, do we have enough time to do this for our next meeting? I'm concerned that we publish.
Yeah, I just want you to have it.
26. 26. Is that, is it going to be enough time, Chris?
Five days, Deanna.
Oh, it's only five, so we're good then?
Yeah, so we can get something published by the end of the week.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So you're going to make it on the 26th?
It's a five, if it's a five-day requirement. Yeah, I mean, the more input we can get, the sooner, the better.
So 7:35?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll move that resolution 21. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No, all in favor? Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Julia Stellum?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question on when placing the signs. So do the signs need to be placed as soon as the law is in effect? Or do we wait until after the sidewalk is created?
Well, the signs should be, I mean, if the law is going to be adopted at the current effective date, the sign should be placed when the law is effective. So if you want the law to have like a later effective date, a delayed effective date, you could do that if you want to.
That's a good idea, yeah.
So the board would have to amend the motion to modify the law. And we have to modify the local law to specify a particular effective date. So what would be effective at the installation?
Can you use language on that?
No, no, you're going to want to have a specific, which you could move later, but, you know, you'd have to, I think you're going to want to have a date certain, not a when this happens kind of thing. So if you want to estimate, you know, the fall or whatever, whenever you think this is going to be done. I mean, if you anticipate it some, it's not going to be the end of the world, right?
Sorry.
If you anticipate it some, it's not the end of the world if you put a no parking situation up there, right?
No, we can put the signs in, we just have to move them when they install.
Oh, I see, because you're, I see, I see. Well, you put up the temporary sign.
There's really not something like a temporary sign. You'd have to do the installation and take them out and then put them back in after the construction is done.
Well, why don't we, I don't think we're going to be completed until August 31st.
Because we would have to order them, and I would need to know how many and where.
August 31st, yeah. I think Ryan's thinking they're going to go on a little grassy strip that's in between the path.
Well, they're on both sides, I believe.
They are on both sides. So that's a good question. We'll have to get the engineer's input on that, right?
Yeah, because that will allow me to order the signs.
Yeah.
And then we can post them as soon as we're ready.
Yeah, so August 30, effective August 31st.
So the law, the law should take effect the later of August 31, 2023. Let's put a year in there. And upon file, the Secretary of State is provided in Section 27 of General Commission.
So I'd like to, I'd like to move to modify the motion, please, to resolution with those edits. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Theresa.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, discussion, perhaps resolution. I think I had mentioned to you, maybe not, this during my commentary, that 68 capital projects. This has been one of those projects, just doesn't seem to be possible to complete because of pandemic, supply chain, excuse from the company awarded contractor a couple of years ago. And here we are again now. New York State doesn't have some matching funding for this. These are the electric vans to help transport. We received several years ago a grant, a federal enhanced mobility, Section 5310 grant for over $100,000 in order to purchase these electric vehicles. I believe we applied in 2017, received an award in 2018. And needless to say, it's been nothing but headache trying to get them constructed. We do have a commitment from the Asensio Foundation for $50,000 towards the purchase. The price of the van is not insignificant. $361,000 in totality. So we're looking at, you know, upwards of nearly $200,000 we reduce from monies that came from our club in a way that's almost fitting since it was the pandemic itself, but was used as the excuse for not getting the project completed back then. We received a couple of bids. This one was the only one that was compliant. It seemed to be within our expectations, given, I think, our last award was for a little less, but that was before the spike in inflation. I know this is something that's very important to particular groups in our community. I know the seniors have been asking for this, you know, as a way to get around, from, say, Red Hook Commons to the community center. We provide funding for programs over at the community center. And, you know, some of those individuals, young and old, have a challenge to get over there. As one example of how these vans would be used, we have the infrastructure in place. What say, do we go ahead even though we have to put in a little more money than we thought we were going to have to do?
Yes.
Yes. Julia?
Yes, I think it's a really important project. I have questions, I guess, about how we will set up the administration for the project and make sure that we hear a broad range of community needs and potential uses for these vans. But I think that those are conversations we can have down the road.
Yeah. It will take months to construct these, right? They're custom order. For the folks at home, these vans will have a wheelchair left in the back of them. And they will, provided we elect the alternate camera security system. And fold-away seats. So you could do the wheelchair, fold it up, and you don't have the wheelchair, fold it down. Greater utility.
I was going to ask, get us all the stops and starts and try to get this done. Are you confident that if we make this award, that we'll actually complete it?
I'm going to, I'm going to take a no comment on that just because I don't want to.
Chink so.
Chink so, exactly. I don't, I don't want to represent. I mean, it was one of the things that I, you know, set off years ago, starting to do. I thought, this can't be that hard, they're making them. And lo and behold, it was a lot harder. So let's just hope. I know they're on the state approval list, but the last member of us is one.
It's a greater chance they get completed if we put forward, but then we don't.
I like that one. Okay, so we'll do both alternates, right? The fold-away and the camera, I think we need the camera security system, right? Especially if we're moving individuals of all abilities. We just want to make sure everybody's safe.
So we have some fill-in-the-blank work to do. This test is fill-in-the-blank today. So we have a resolution that provides, excuse me, for, just recites what you just noted, that the town has a, an award for a DOT grant for $113.187 and the Asensio Foundation grant for $50,000. Those are pledge grants towards the acquisition. And we have the bids received, and I believe that was, the date of the sealed bids opening was originally called for January, but I believe that it was changed to February. Is that correct?
I don't remember. It says January 11th, but I don't, I thought it was like the 4th, and then we did it the 11th. But I don't remember.
Yeah, I didn't have that.
I can go look.
Can you?
Yeah.
I think we should correct that.
It didn't there, okay.
Yeah, okay, so then that date is what it is. And then, so we're going to be filling in, whereas the bid of.
361-800.
The bid of Lightning Motors Inc., an amount of $361,000 as the base bid, $6,900 for alternate 1, and $8,900 for alternate 2 has been determined to be the lowest responsible bid as specified in the project specs. And then in the other blanks, we have in Section 1, the supervisor or deputy supervisor authorized executive contract with Lightning Motors, that's the blank Inc., for the project with alternates 1 and 2 accepted for a total contract price of, and check the number, $377,600?
That's correct.
Is that what you have?
Yeah.
All right, so then that's it for the blanks. And then the payment of reimbursement to be made from, to confirm the proceeds of the grants and the balance from the general A fund, correct?
The balance from the A fund, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have that correct. Just waiting for Deanna to just confirm the date of the bid opening because I didn't have that.
And I understand that the community needs assessment input at the, for the community center.